To get a refresher. It's good to get a refresher, alright, so. Let me start this thing off, you know, on this channel here, we pray, right? For a fact, we pray, and not just do we pray, we pray to Jesus, so. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to have another live stream. For those watching me live, for those watching me on the replay, we pray, Lord Jesus, that you help them. Understand the language of math. Open their understanding, Lord, as they go and take their ASVAB test. Or maybe they're trying to get their GED, maybe they're just here for fun, Lord. We pray that they're able to receive something and that they can go back and conquer their exam, so we thank you. We love you, we appreciate you, in your precious and mighty name, we pray. Amen, and on that note, alright, let's get started. So I never just jump straight into the math itself. Like I never just dive into hard, hard questions, if that makes sense, right, so. I always like to get things started with like mental warmups, alright, so. As you see the questions pop up on your screen. Matter of fact, before we get started, somebody shoot me like a thumbs up or something like that, that they can see. What's happening on this screen, can y'all see this question right here? If so, go ahead and start, uh. Go ahead and start letting me know the answers, alright. Y'all just bear with me right now, I'm doing like six different things, alright, so ten times six. I could see it on my screen, let me see if y'all could see it on your screen. Multiplication. Ten times six, alright, fun fact, anything times ten. You just add a zero to the number, alright, so in this case, six, anything times ten, you're going to add a zero. Boom. Twelve times eleven, alright. Why am I doing multiplication times tables? If you are taking your test, right, as I'm talking, y'all be answering the question, so with your pen, with your paper. Uh, think of it as a race, alright, try to answer as quickly as you can. Twelve times eleven, alright, we do multiplication times tables because. Let me make sure I'm right. Boom, right, one thirty-two, great job, let me have a. We do multiplication times tables, right, because the ASVAB is a timed test, four times three. It's a timed test, so what do I mean by that? If you are taking forever to solve something like four times three, and you have to do it the long way. You're gonna fail, you, you might get the right answers, but it would take you s- too long to be able to solve each question. Doing it the long way, so, we gotta do. If you don't know it already, you, we have to learn our multiplication times tables, right, nine times nine. Alright, y'all who are commenting in the chat section, great job, matter of fact. I wanna see y'all, I wanna see y'all's answers, hold on one second. Alright, I wanna see y'all's answers. Alright. Okay, let's do this, nine times nine, did anybody answer already? Nine times nine, personally. I got eighty-one. Nine times nine, eighty-one, alright, so learn your multiplication times tables, alright, it's a must, five times six. I got thirty, alright, if it's taking you guys like. Fifteen, twenty seconds, uh, to be able to think of the answer, in my opinion, I think that's a little bit too long, okay? Nine times eight, alright, try to get as quick as you can, right, just seeing the numbers, nine times eight. For some of y'all, I would recommend buying flashcards. Uh, in the description below, I listed a link, so that way y'all can get flashcards, if you know that you need help. Please, get the flashcards, alright, nine times eight, I got seventy-two. Alright, I'm not perfect, but, for the most part, I, it makes sense to me, okay, sometimes I still get some wrong. Right, eleven times three, for something like this, I might mess around and say thirty, alright? If you said thirty, it's not thirty, alright, so let me, let me, uh. Let me stop messing around, alright, so, fun fact, whenever you're timesing anything by eleven, okay? At least numbers one through nine, what you're going to do is double the number. So in this case, eleven times three, you're gonna take this three and double it, three, three, okay? If it was eleven times five, you'll take the five, double it, fifty-five, eleven times nine, double it, ninety-nine, alright? So here we got eleven times three, thirty-three. Alright, four times seven. Four times seven, what y'all got? I got twenty-eight. Two times eight, we should know this one, this one should be quick. I got sixteen. There we go, I'm not gonna say the answer to this one, alright, cuz I just said it five seconds ago. Whenever you're timesing anything by eleven, right, want numbers one through nine, what do we do? Nine times eleven. Nine times eleven. Alright, we double it, nine times eleven being ninety-nine. Hold on, y'all, I'm having. Alright, zero, zero times ten. Anything times zero is gonna be zero, alright, that one. That one should have been a quick one. Seven times one, alright, anything times one is going to be seven. In my opinion, I think we're still struggling with this, right, normally I do a quick, uh, mental warmup, but. Since I feel like we're struggling, you know, like, I don't think we're fully warmed up yet. Alright, so we're gonna continue going, zero times five, anything times five. I'm sorry, anything times zero is going to be zero. Here's a good one, alright? Thirteen times seven. If you don't know your thirteens times tables, that's fine, what I would recommend you doing is, if you know your twelve times tables, i.e. twelve times seven. Right, figure out what that is, and then add another seven. Alright, so if you don't know thirteen times seven, let's go back to twelve times seven, what would you get? So if it was twelve times seven, I believe that's eighty-four, and then if we plus seven, what would that give us? Right, so from eighty-four plus seven. Is this right? I've never done seven times thirteen in my life. But would you look at that, alright, because I have a frame of reference to think about? To, because I have a frame of reference already in my brain, it makes sense, alright, so. Nine times five. Nine times five. We should know our five times tables, so let's get it, nine times five. I got forty-five. Y'all believe me, forty-five? Alright, sounds good. Let's do about like five more of these, and then we're gonna switch it up really quick. So let's speed through this, seven times two, I got fourteen. Six times five, I think we did this, I might be tripping, but six times five, thirty, we should know our five, five times tables. Come on, they pitching us the easy ones. Zero times eight, anything times zero, zero. Twelve times three. Twelve times three, what y'all got? Twelve times three, I got thirty-six. Great job to y'all who are following, following along, man, great job to y'all who are trying. Even if you get it wrong, don't feel ashamed, alright, this is a judgment-free zone, alright? So don't feel shy, don't feel afraid, I, I actually admire people who. Take a chance and they might get it wrong versus people who, you know, are too shy and they're afraid to try at all, so. Um, one times two, that's obvious too, come on, we don't got anything else crazy, ten times one, that's gonna be ten. Alright, twelve times twelve. Twelve times twelve. Twelve times twelve, what y'all got? So I think my, I think I'm. I think there's a little bit of a lag, that's why I'm not seeing answers, alright, so twelve times twelve. One forty-four. Alright, so great job, great job, great job. Right, I think by now we should be thinking along the lines of math, alright, um. What did I say, I said we're gonna switch it up, right, okay, well, let's switch it up, so. Let's switch it up then. Alright, instead of multiplication that y'all are used to, okay, let's see, let's see, let's see what we got, alright? Twenty-seven divided by nine. A lot of people can do multiplication, but when it comes to division, oh my goodness gracious, alright? Oh my goodness gracious, it's, it's usually not a good story, so let's, let's try our best, okay? Multiplication and division are related to one another, okay? If you know your multiplication times tables, it will help you with division, so twenty. Twenty-seven divided by nine, or how many times does nine fit into twenty-seven, you can think of it like that. Alright, I see y'all commenting three. Alright, well, I see y'all commenting three, alright, so let's go with it. Let's go with it. Alright, we're gonna take division slow, alright, very, very, very slow, thirty divided by ten, okay? Or think about it this way, what number times ten equals thirty? Alright, if you're slow at division, don't worry, don't worry. Messiah battle, division is, uh, usually everybody's downfall, what number times ten equals thirty? Alright, personally, I'm going with three, if you guys going to war with me on this answer. Let's see, yep, it's correct, seventy-two divided by twelve. Uh-oh, we getting, we incorporating big numbers now, alright? Big numbers, don't get intimidated, man, lesson of the day, don't let math intimidate you, okay? Don't let math intimidate you, what number times twelve equals seventy-two? Alright, we're not gonna get intimidated by, you know, it's seventy-two, alright, or, it's not gonna happen, what number? Times twelve, I'm sorry, yes, what number times twelve equals seventy-two? Alright, so, I see three, I don't know if that three is pertaining to this question or the last question, alright? We can try three. Are we going with three? You see, the answers are coming in slower, right, so division is, division is. A lot of people's kryptonite. Okay? I see six, I see three. Alright. So I'm not. I'm, I'm going with six, six times twelve equals seventy-two. Okay, six times twelve equals seventy-two, whoever was saying three. Maybe you were talking about the last question, maybe you were talking about this question, what I like is that you gave an answer, so. I'm, remember, this is a judge-free zone, alright, judge-free zone, great job, keep participating. Okay, we're gonna get some answers wrong, but that's how we learn as a group, alright, seventy-two divided by twelve, let's see, six. Here we go again, another seventy-two, seventy-two divided by eight. Don't let math intimidate you, break it down. Bit by bit, okay, bit by bit. Seventy-two divided by eight, let me see if I could do something, man, I wanna see if I could, uh. If I could use this as a teaching moment, what are y'all thinking? Seventy-two divided by eight. Alright, I see somebody saying seven. Oops. I see somebody saying nine. What do y'all think? Right, seventy-two, I see seven, I see nine, okay, well, let's see, alright, so, seventy-two divided by eight. Okay, one said seven, one said nine, let's go with nine. Nine will be the correct answer. Okay, here's a, here's one that visually looks intimidating. However. It's not too bad, remember I told y'all in the beginning that there's a certain number that, if you times it by this certain number, you just add a zero at the end? What number is that? One twenty divided by twelve, or, what number times twelve equals one twenty? What number times twelve equals one twenty, listen, I'm not in a rush tonight. If we stay on division all night, I'm perfectly fine with that, alright, perfectly fine with that. Okay, I see somebody saying nine. I see somebody saying ten. Alright. So one twenty divided by twelve, right, I'm going with ten, remember, ten. Times any number, you just add a zero at the end of that number, so if we're doing ten times twelve. We're gonna add a zero on the end of that twelve, making it one twenty. One twenty divided by twelve equals ten, or, ten times twelve equals one twenty. Alright, I hope I'm making sense here. Here we have twenty divided by four. Twenty divided by four. Twenty divided by four. Alright, I see five, I'm going with five. I agree. Forty-eight divided by four, or, what number? Times four equals forty-eight? What number times four equals forty-eight? What number times four equals forty-eight? Some of y'all might be asking, why is he going so slow today, the purpose, the reason I'm going so slow today is because. It's not about rushing through questions, alright, it's about understanding why we're doing what we're doing. Alright, so forty-eight divided by four, remember, twelve. A lot of people struggle with their twelve times tables, twelve times four equals forty-eight, alright? Times tables that people struggle with often, is there twelve times tables? Uh, there are nine times tables, like seven, eight, nines usually gets people, twelves usually gets people. Um, so, I can understand that's why the answer starts slowing down, alright, because people typically struggle with those. Here we have twenty-two divided by eleven, I told y'all some time ago, eleven times. Eleven times, you know, whenever you're timesing something by eleven. At least numbers one through nine, you just double the number, right? So in this case, twenty-two divided by eleven is going to be two, okay, two times eleven equals twenty-two. Alright, great job, so it, it looks, so, yep. Haley's on top of it, right, forty-five divided by nine. Forty-five divided by nine, I'm going with five, let's see, perfect. Alright, y'all, I wanna see what y'all gonna get for this, one oh eight divided by nine. And let me see if I could show y'all how to solve this, for those of you who have pen and paper, I get a lot of comments actually about, uh. Hey Simba, can you teach me how to do long division, alright, so, matter of fact, let's use this question as an example. Right, so we have one oh eight. Divided by nine. One oh eight divided by nine. Let me see if y'all could see this actually. Alright, are y'all still seeing my screen? One oh eight divided by nine. Alright, so for, for those of you who are asking, how do we go about solving in questions like, like this, long division? You're gonna put the big number on the inside, you're gonna put the small number on the inside, alright, so one oh eight divided by nine. We got it like this, and then you're gonna say, how many times does nine fit into one? Nine cannot fit into one at all, okay, so we're gonna go over it. We're gonna include the next placeholder, how many times can nine fit into the number ten, alright? One time, so we're gonna go ahead and put our one here, okay? One times nine equals nine. You're going to subtract these two numbers. Ten minus nine equals one. And then we're gonna move to the right, this eight is going to drop down, alright, down here at the bottom. How many times does nine fit into eighteen, or, nine times what equals eighteen? The answer is two, alright, two times nine is eighteen. And then when we subtract these two numbers, we get zero, that's how we know we're, we're finished, alright, so the answer. One oh eight divided by nine is going to be twelve. Alright, we did that kinda quick, but I hope it made sense. I hope that made sense. Alright, I'm trying to use everything as a teaching moment, so that y'all are not on here wasting your time, alright? We're gonna do like two more, and then we're gonna see if we can move into the, the lesson of the day. Alright, I know it's late, for those of you that are on the east coast, I get it, alright? Going on eight-thirty, so, let's see if we can maximize our time. And finish this up, alright, I know we spent a little bit of time on this, but I feel like division is gonna be good for y'all to see, so that way you're not only thinking. Multiplication, alright, this is an easy one, fourteen divided by seven, we should know that off the top of our heads, cuz. We know that two times seven equals fourteen. Right, two times seven equals fourteen, fourteen divided by seven is two. Same thing, this is a fairly easy one, twenty-four divided by twelve, or what number times twelve equals twenty-four? Two times twelve equals twenty-four, let's end it on this one. I like to end it on hard ones, but, alright, let's end it on this one, okay? Forty divided by five. Forty divided by five, or what number times five equals forty? What number? Times five equals forty? I see eight, I'm going with eight. I'm taking that to the bank. Alright, let's end it on this one, alright, I'll, I'll be content ending it on this one, okay? Sixty-three divided by seven equals what? Or, what number times seven equals sixty-three, alright? Listen, if we're gonna end it, we might as well end it on a bang, alright, we can't end it on two divided by one, okay, so sixty-three divided by seven is what? Y'all go ahead and let me know. Sixty-three, oh, y'all stuck, y'all are stuck. Sixty-three divided by seven. Alright, sixty-three divided by seven, or, blank times seven is sixty-three? No way, eh? Alright, alright, alright. We can end it on that one, I'm content ending it on that one, alright, great job. Great job, all of y'all who are, look at all those right answers, man, great job, honestly, great job. Alright, so, let's briefly talk about something, right? Let's talk about why y'all are struggling on the ASVAB test, okay, there's a lot of reasons, okay? I, I help a lot of y'all out, okay, hundreds, thousands of y'all, okay? I help a lot of y'all out when it comes to getting ready or preparing for your ASVAB exam, alright? The reason why a lot of y'all are struggling, one of the big reasons that I wanna talk about tonight, is that. Some of y'all are preparing to fail, before you even take the test, y'all are going into this test with no confidence. Alright, some of y'all are going to this test room, talking and saying to yourself. That you're going to, you know, like, I, I'm not gonna do well, or, I feel like I'm just going to fail, or, you know? You know, I, I'm, I'm nervous if I studied enough, so on and so forth, alright? When you're going to this test, you have to have a sense of confidence, alright, because in all reality, it is a very difficult test. Okay, the ASVAB is a very difficult test, there is like ten subjects, if you haven't taken it, there's like ten subjects. That are all unrelated subjects, so to speak, keep the first five subjects, you have general science, arithmetic reasoning. Math knowledge, paragraph comprehension, you have word knowledge, right, those five, first five subjects is what's going to determine. What we call your AFQT score. That score basically lets you know. If you're eligible to join the military at all, that's number one. Uh, two, it helps identify like incentives that you would qualify for, okay, so. And, uh, three, it helps to identify the job opportunities that will be available to you, so. Somebody who scores a thirty-one, for example, and somebody who scores an eighty-five, for example. That person who scores an eighty-five will have more. Uh, uh, they would qualify for more job opportunities than the person scoring a thirty-one, alright? I hope, I, I hope that makes sense, but, at this point, I think that y'all should understand what I'm talking about, right, the better you do on the test. The better equipped that you're going to be, um, for getting the career field that you wanna get, alright? So don't go into the test, you know, talking about like, oh, you know, I just suck, I just suck at the ASVAB, and you know? No, you gotta go into it with a sense of confidence, right, you need a, a mindset, uh, change, so to speak. So here, if you look at this picture, right, you have a cat looking into like a, like a mirror, so to speak, right? But he's not seeing the little house cat that he is, alright, nobody can tell this. Cat. That he, there's not a lion on the inside, alright? That's the type of mindset shift, uh, shift that I wanna bring y'all into, okay? Don't go into the ASVAB, or, I don't think I'm good enough type of thing, okay, you need a mindset shift. You need a mindset shift, alright? I had y'all type in one of my live chats before, I can do all things, alright? So if you're watching me on the replay, go ahead and type that in the. So if you're watching me on the replay, go ahead and type that in the comments. If you're watching me live right now, type that. I can do all things, there's nothing that I can't do, right? So I really believe that. You gotta change your mentality, you gotta change your mindset, you gotta change how you, how you see the challenge in front of you. And when you get to, when you get inside the military, regardless of what branch, that's what they're gonna be teaching you in bootcamp. That's what they're gonna be teaching you in basic training, alright? I like this one, failure is a bruise, not a tattoo. A lot of y'all that be, uh, joining me on the live streams, or watching me on the replay, are people who have already taken their ASVAB test. You've either taken your ASVAB test already, or you've taken the PyCAT, alright? For y'all who know what the PyCAT is, if you know, you know, okay? It's basically the ASVAB, uh, ASVAB test that you can take in your recruiting, uh, office, okay? So if you failed already, it is what it is, you know, stop crying about it, stop thinking about it. Put it out of your mind, you know what I mean? Focus on your next test. Okay? What do y'all see when you look at this picture, this image? Like, what, what do y'all? What do y'all see? We have a man, or yes, we have a man who is pushing a boulder uphill. We got a man who is kicking that boulder downhill. Alright? Why is that relevant? Why am I showing y'all these images to begin with, alright? Yes, it is to provide a sense of motivation, but beyond that, right, it's to instill a sense of belief inside of you. Between these two figures that we have, right, the, the, the man pushing the rock up the hill, trying to get it to the top of the mountain. And the man who's kicking the rock downhill, which one of these two men is exerting more effort? Right? Ask yourself, this is a serious question, right? We're gonna extract the principles of this image. The one pushing, the one pushing this boulder uphill, or the one kicking it downhill, who is? Who is, who is putting in more effort? Obviously, the one that's pushing it uphill, right? The one, it's easy to be complaining, it's easy to whine, it's easy to, to get frustrated and, 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 and kick it, kick this boulder downhill, alright? Man, forget this ASVAB test, forget joining the military, forget, you know, it's easy to whine about it. I failed my last one, I only got a twelve on my last test, you know, it's easy to whine, alright? It's not easy to get back in the fight and be pushing this boulder uphill. For some of y'all, math is your weakest subject, alright? It's your weakest subject, no matter how much you try, it feels like you just can't comprehend math. It has never made sense to you from the first grade to the, you know, it, growing up in junior high and high school, it, it's never made sense to you. It's always been your weakest area, okay? We get that. But stop crying about it, okay? Now that we've identified that it might take you a little longer studying math, right? Guess what you need to do? You need to study math. For example, running is one of my weakest areas, alright? I hate to run, but you know what I gotta do in order to get better at running? I gotta run, right? So be like that man to the left, or that image to the left, okay? It might be a struggle, you may not get it as quickly as others, but keep going, you're gonna get somewhere, keep studying. You might have to put an extra fifteen minutes on top of your study sessions, alright? So you got this. Type in the chat, I can do all things. I can do all things, I mean that, I mean that with all my heart. I can do all things. Alright, I'm looking at time. Looking at these lessons, we're gonna, today, we're gonna cut these lessons kinda short. Alright, I'm gonna teach y'all, or I wanna teach y'all. Man, where to begin? Okay, let's do arithmetic reasoning, alright? Let's do arithmetic reasoning. The reason that I'm saying that is, uh, because of the two math sections, I think this is probably. If, hm, majority, ninety-nine percent, um, people's weakest area, alright? So what is arithmetic reasoning? Basically, it's math. That requires a certain level of comprehension, alright? You know how we were just doing multiplication and, uh, division, uh, equa- uh, times tables? It's easy to see math as numbers, two times two equals four, right? Arithmetic reasoning is different, it's kinda like a riddle, right? It's a, it's a word problem. That requires comprehension, and so you need to be able to, to see math as words, number one, instead of as numbers. And comprehend what the question is asking. Alright, so that's why everybody does so horribly on the arithmetic reasoning section, alright? So let's see what we can do. Before I just pitch massive word problems at you, I want you to understand why we're doing what we're doing. So arithmetic reasoning is seeing math as word, as a word problem. But knowing how to take those pieces and turn it into a mathematical equation for you to solve, alright? So here we have something. The question says, select the correct equation for the expression below. So here we have the expression, five more than eight, alright? Today's not gonna be a complex, especially since we're crunching time already, right? It's not gonna be a complex, um, day, okay? But it's gonna be i- impactful and effective, alright? So let's select the correct equation, right? Five more than eight. How would y'all write that as? As numbers, five more than eight. Are we multiplying? Are we adding? Are we subtracting, or is this an exponent? I wanna know y'all's thoughts. Are we adding? Are we multiplying? Are we subtracting? Or are we using exponents? Five more than eight, if we were to turn this word problem into. A number-based, uh, equation. Alright, so whenever we're seeing the number, I'm sorry, whenever we're seeing the word. Uh, written like this, five more than eight, alright? The, the expression that we're gonna be using is addition. Alright, it's going to be addition. Hold on one second, yeah, sorry. Alright, so A is gonna be the correct answer. I don't think that y'all could see what I'm doing. Alright, I think y'all can see that. A is gonna be the correct answer, alright? So I see. I see that someone said that the answer will be B, alright? So thank you for, number one, thank you for commenting that, right? Let me explain to you why that's not the correct answer, alright? So the difference between addition and multiplication confuses a lot of people, just like subtraction and division. Knowing to you, knowing when to use what function. If we're adding. Help me, Jesus, help me to explain this. Alright, if we're adding. We are moving from the number eight. Let me see if maybe I can write this in a. In a ti- uh, number timeline. So we have the number eight, y'all can see that. And if we have five more than eight, that means that we're moving from the number eight. To the number nine, to the number ten, to the number eleven, twelve, thirteen, right? We're moving, if that makes sense, we're adding. We're, we're moving from the number eight, and we're moving five places on the number line. Five more than eight, so we're starting at eight, and we're moving five more places, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Until we get to thirteen, okay? So if we were to write that mathematically, five more than eight. Since we're moving one number at a time, so to speak, we're using addition, we're adding, alright? When we multiply, that's more so referring to groups, okay? We're moving by groups, alright? So five, eight times five would mean like, you know, we had. We were going on a field trip, and we had to break up into groups of eight, right? So let's just say, I don't even know how I would do this, right? So that's four, that's six. Let's say every slice of this pie was a person, so there's eight people here, okay? And we had five groups of eight, right? So I wish I can copy and paste, but let's just say we have another group here, full of eight people. We have another group here, full of eight people, another group here, five groups in total, right? Of eight people, and another group here of eight people, right? What that would mean, right, and obviously in this one, we have eight people, what that would mean would be that we have. Five different groups of eight people, which would give us. Forty people total. Please, Jesus, y'all comment and let me know if that makes sense, okay? Let me know if you're following what it is that I'm saying. Also, I see somebody say that they can't see the screen. Can y'all s- not see my screen? I hope I didn't just do all that in vain. Alright, so one, when we're adding, we're moving one number at a time, okay? Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, until you get to thirteen. When we're multiplying, we're dealing with groups, okay? Groups. So there are five groups, one, two, three, four, five. There are five groups, and each group had eight people, okay? Each group had eight people. That would give us forty, so two different answers. Five more than eight will be answer A. Okay, thank y'all, thank y'all. Alright, I hope that made sense. Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead and clear my screen. If y'all have, uh, questions, I'm trying to monitor the chat as well, same time that I'm trying to, uh. To keep this class going. Alright. Here we go again, another question, select the correct equation. So we have the sum of a number and twenty-two equals thirty-five. If y'all are having a hard time with these questions, okay? Arithmetic reasoning will punch you in the gut ten out of ten times. So we're taking arithmetic reasoning, and we're, we're breaking it down into smaller manageable chunks. Because once you guys begin to understand what it is that I'm talking about here. It would be like, oh, I get what the question is asking me, right? So we're making it a little bit easier, and we're making it a little bit more manageable, so that way y'all can stand a fighting chance. Otherwise, you know, y- you're gonna be relying on guessing, okay? So we have the sum of a number and twenty-two equals thirty-five. Whenever we're dealing with arithmetic reasoning, let me tell you something, you're gonna have to pick up on key words. You're going to have to know what. Um, these words mean. Okay? Alright, so the sum of a number. The sum of a number, whenever you see the word sum. What function is being asked? Can somebody answer that question for me? Whenever you see the word sum. Alright, let me tell y'all, whenever you see the word sum, the, the function that we're dealing with here is going to be. Addition, au- automatically, every time, ten out of ten times, okay? Sum means addition. It means when you add two things together, you're going to get the sum of those numbers, alright? Sum means addition. So that being said, the sum of a number and twenty-two equals thirty-five. The sum of a number and twenty-two equals thirty-five, so option A. Is not gonna be it, right? Because I just said that whenever we're dealing with the word sum, we're dealing with addition, alright? We can X that out. Option B. Twenty-two minus X equals thirty-five. Alright, we're gonna X that out, because I just said what that sum means. Addition. Okay, addition is happening. Okay, so option B is not going to be it. Option C. Is not going to be it, okay? Whenever you see letters like this, combined with numbers, what's happening right here is multiplication. So this twenty-two X really means twenty-two times some number, AKA X. Okay? So we know that since multiplication is happening here, we can cancel Christmas on C. Which leaves D, we're gonna see if this makes sense. The sum of a number and twenty-two. Equals thirty-five. So we have a number being added to the number twenty-two, right? This, basically, this is saying, when you add up two numbers. AKA number one and number two being twenty-two, it's going to equal thirty-five. D is going to be the correct answer. This, this equation here. Is how this looks when it, when it comes to arithmetic reasoning, okay? So some of y'all might be able to solve this if it was in this format. However, the minute you see this up here, it, it, it becomes a whole nother language. We're trying to bridge that gap. Okay, the sum of a number and twenty-two equals thirty-five is going to be D. D is the correct answer. D is the correct answer. Alright? I'm gonna clear the screen, how are we doing on time? Oh my goodness, alright. Alright, I won't have y'all, y'all here too late, but let's see if we can get one or two more quick ones. Here's another key word, alright? The product of three and nine, the product of three and nine. What does that mean in math? In math terminology, the product of three and nine. Alright, I just taught y'all two seconds ago, for those of y'all that would take notes, sum, when we're, whenever we're dealing with sum. The sum of a number and a number, right? We're dealing with addition. Right? We're dealing with addition. Here we have a different trigger word, we have the word product. So what does product mean? What does product mean? As y'all are thinking about this, forgive me, I'm just DJing this, uh. I'm running a show and, and being a math teacher at the same time here. Alright, the product of three. And nine. Okay? So that way I can see y'all, I can see what y'all are saying as I'm teaching, alright? Here we go, the product of three and nine, so as some means addition, when we're dealing with this word here called product, we're dealing with multiplication, alright? Multiplication means product. I'm sorry, product means that we're multiplying. I hope y'all are taking notes, if you need notes. Product means that you're multiplying. Come on, man. Sorry, y'all, this thing is giving me a hard time to write. Alright, product means that you are multiplying, so we can, we know that A is the wrong answer, because if we were adding, this would be called the sum, alright? Did any of y'all answer B? Alright, I hope you did, okay, cuz B is going to be the correct answer. The product of three and nine, this is what it looks like in number format. Three times nine, that's what that's saying. The product of three and nine is this, three times nine. Let me also tell you, because this will be a good time to teach. This is dealing with some, addition means some, multiplication means product. If we were dealing with subtraction, alright, so if this said the difference of three and nine, or the difference of nine and three, you know that you will be dealing with subtraction, okay? Difference means subtraction. Okay? The quotient between three and nine is division, quotient. Alright, I hope I'm saying it right, alright? Between three and nine is division. Alright, so we have some, product, difference, quotient. You have to know these things, have to know these things when it pertains to arithmetic reasoning. Alright, so we got B being the right answer. Let's go ahead and clear this, let's do another one. Okay, a number multiplied by negative six equals eighteen. A number multiplied by negative six equals eighteen. Are y'all going with option A, option B, option C, or option D? A number multiplied by negative six equals eighteen. Oh. I wonder if y'all, uh-oh, y'all nervous? It was a long time of silence just then. Alright, a number multiplied by negative six equals eighteen. Alright, so I see some option As coming in, okay? Option A, a number multiplied by negative six equals eighteen. Looks like a lot of y'all are putting your faith in option A. Alright, so let's, let's see. Let's break this down. A number, alright, whenever we don't know, whenever it doesn't specify what that number is, we're gonna use what's called a variable, okay? I.e. a letter, right? In this case, X means that we don't know what that number is, technically. A number multiplied by negative six equals eighteen. So we have, one thing that we know for sure is that negative six exists. Can we agree on that? Negative six is a thing in this equation. A number is being multiplied by negative six. So automatically, we can go down in our answer key here, right? And we can see option A provides a negative six for us to choose from. Option B provides a negative six for us to choose from. Option C, we can, this ain't it, alright? Because this is positive six. So option C, as I like to say, we can cancel Christmas on option C. Option D also provides a negative six for us to choose from. So we have a number being multiplied by negative six, so remember I told you, whenever you have a number and a letter, or a coefficient and a variable, right? Side by side like this, multiplication is happening, right? So a number is being multiplied by negative six. And so we have negative six being multiplied by a number, so option A is in the runnings. Negative six here is not, it is being multiplied by a number, it's just that that number is not the variable, okay? So that's why option B is out. Because this doesn't say negative six being multiplied by eighteen, it doesn't say that. Alright, we gotta read here. Alright, let's skip down to option D. Negative six is being multiplied by a number. So we still got two of them in the runnings. So let's see, a number is being multiplied by negative six, right? In which case, A and D are both a number being multiplied by negative six. But we know that this equals eighteen, alright? So for those of you who chose option A, you're absolutely correct. Absolutely correct, great job in fact. Alright, for those of y'all who went to option D, this is why you would be wrong, because this is negative eighteen, it's not positive eighteen like the, the, the sentence is saying. Alright, are y'all still with me? If y'all are, we're gonna do one more. We're gonna do one more, and I think I'm gonna pack it up, cuz it's, it's nine o'clock, alright, so let's do are you live now? I sure am. Let's do one more. Some of y'all might want me to keep going, y'all. Some of y'all said, you know, I don't have a bedtime. Alright, so let's keep going. Why not, let's do another one. Alright. Seven divided by a number. Seven divided by a number. Seven divided by a number. How's that looking in y'all's head? And this is how they get y'all on the test, man, I'm, I'm telling you. They're gonna have this, not this question, obviously, okay? But you, you know, they're gonna do this in many different ways, right? They're gonna have something for you to solve, and in the answer key, it's gonna almost seem like every answer is, could be the right one. Seven divided by a number. Remember, they're trying to separate the people who can score thirty-one versus the people who can score a, a seventy-five, okay? And things like this is what's going to determine the two. Seven divided by a number. Alright, please do not worry about the time, I'm on the east coast, but I'm happy to stay as late as needed. I really appreciate the way you explain everything. Roger that, Roger that, alright? Roger that, I appreciate that, I'm glad that you're getting something out of it. Alright? So I see option D is coming in, thank you, thank you, thank you. Option D is coming in, okay? Seven divided by a number. So would that number be on the top, would that number be on the bottom? You know, is that number one? Would the one be on the right of the division sign, would the one be on the left of the division sign? So we got D. Okay, I'm going slow like this for a reason, alright? So that everybody could follow along. Alright? We don't know what number seven is divided by, so it's D. Alright, D is gonna be the correct answer, spot on. Spot on. Spot on, D is gonna be the correct answer. Why, why is A not the answer? Because seven divided by a number, remember, when we don't know what that number is, it's going to be a variable, right? So we can actually even put an X here to represent this A number. Okay, we can call that X, okay? So seven is going to be divided by a num- a number. Man, I hope I didn't confuse y'all, cuz that looks like a multiplication sign. Alright, seven is gonna be divided by a number, so since we know what this is, that doesn't accurately represent what we're solving. Seven divided by one, they're just trying to do the same thing, you know, fool you, but the same principle applies, alright? It doesn't say seven divided by one, it says seven divided by a number that we don't know, that's out of there. Leaving C and D. Both of them are representing division, i.e. whenever you see a fraction, division is happening. C and D are both representing division happening, okay? The difference is that in C, a number is being divided by seven. A number is being divided by seven. Which is very similar to the question, but that's not what the question is saying here. This is saying seven is being divided by a number, okay? Seven is being divided by a number. Does that make sense? I'm not moving forward until I get some acknowledgement on if this makes sense or not. Does that make sense? Here we have a number is being divided by seven, and here we have seven is being divided by a number. Seven is being divided by a number. Oh. I don't even know if y'all could uh, if y'all could see. Alright, that's why option D is gonna be the correct answer. Y'all are tracking, y'all are, y'all, y'all are tracking, y'all are tracking. I like to see that. This wasn't the uh, this wasn't the main syllabus, but I'm happy that we're taking the time to do this, because anytime we, we go live again, we're gonna be building off of these lessons, alright? Alright. The quotient of a number and ten is five. The quotient of a number and ten is five. What does that look like in numbers? What is that, what does that look like in, in number math? What does that look like? The quotient of a number and ten is five. Man, I'm telling you, math is just one of those things that tries to intimidate you. Don't get intimidated, man, with uh, with, with words like quotient, you know? Please, alright? Remember I told y'all, I had y'all say I can do all things, I had y'all look at those, those images, right? And see yourself as that little house cat looking into the mirror and seeing that line, alright? Don't get intimidated by questions like these, that, you know, a hundred and forty-four divided by, you know, don't, listen. Right, cuz we're, we're building on the fundamentals that we know. Okay? We're building on the, we're mastering the fundamentals. I seen some people comment in the comment section, but, you know, at a different time, you know, Simba, these questions are way too easy, or you know, um, questions on the ASVAB are way harder than this, you know? Why, why do you basically teach, why are you teaching these easy questions, right? The reason being is, that person is looking at my content. And because they're looking at like my content, it probably shows that they either failed recently in ASVAB test, or they did poorly on a practice ASVAB test, in which case, their fundamentals was probably a little off, right? So if we can't master the basics, if we can't get the basics right on a consistent basis, we are going to just be guessing, alright? I want y'all to get so good that they can throw such a difficult question at you, and because you know the basics, you know, you, you're not intimidated, alright? So here we go, the quotient of a number and ten is five. What did you, what did I say once upon a time, when you see this word quotient, what function is happening? Alright, I see the answer B. Yeah, I see the answer B, I see the answer B. Okay, division is happening, alright? Anytime you see quotient, division is happening, alright? So automatically, this is easy, because here we have difference, here we have product, here we have sum. The only equation that represents quotient is B. Alright, and let's see if it makes sense, the quotient of a number and ten, right? The quotient of a number and ten, so we have, here we have a number being divided by ten, meaning this is the quotient of a number being divided by ten is going to equal five. Now, if we actually solve this, we can figure out what the number is, but that's not necessarily the, the point of why I'm live right now, okay? Maybe some other time, we'll, we can go back and actually solve these things, uh, to figure out what that number is, right? But here, I just want you to get the language of math, alright? So for those of you who answered B, pat yourselves on the back. Let me let, let y'all know something, right? This week, I'm going live. For those of you guys who need extra help on your, um, studying for the test, right? I'm going live. Uh, sure, I'm on YouTube today, which is why y'all are seeing me and I appreciate y'all joining, right? But I'm gonna try to go live five days a week, alright? So Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, for those of y'all who really do need the extra help. The live sessions that I'm gonna be doing is on my website, alright? So if you guys haven't checked out simbaalexander.com, go ahead and check that out, alright? There's gonna be a lot of uh, content, a lot of live stream sessions that are happening, just like this one, so that way y'all can understand the language of math. We're gonna be starting off doing the basics like we're doing now, but we're gonna build on that, alright? I wanna take y'all into algebra, ratios and proportions, you know? I wanna take y'all into, into, you know, exponents and, and fractions, percentages, you know, things like that. Things that you're gonna be seeing real time on your exam. So, these sessions are ten dollar study sessions. That's correct. Ten dollar study sessions, and we're gonna be going for an hour, hour and a half, however long that y'all can, can tolerate, alright? We're gonna be going, so that way y'all are fully equipped. So, if you haven't signed up already, head over to my website, and that's where you're gonna be seeing me go live majority of the time. If you're only watching me on YouTube, I'm telling you, you, we, we, we handle the fundamentals, but you're missing out on a lot, so my goal is to take people who cannot pass the ASVAB, and to turn y'all into champions in just five days, five to seven days, alright? So if you haven't signed up already for this week's courses, go ahead and do so, ten dollars, uh, ten dollars um, to study for the ASVAB, right? Ten dollar, ten dollar sessions. So, here we know that the answer is B. Great job, let's move on to the next one. Y'all told me don't worry about the time, so let's just finish this up. A number decreased by twenty-one equals three, alright? I'm speeding through this one, because I think that by now, we're thinking along the lines of math, alright? A number decreased by twenty-one equals three. A number decreased by twenty-one equals three. Alright, just looking at this. Just looking at this. Ten dollars per session? Yes, ten dollars per session, ten dollars per session. Alright, ten dollars per session. A number decreased by twenty-one equals three. Here we have three minus a number is twenty-one, not what the question is asking. Alright, I see y'all commenting D. Perfect. D is the correct answer, alright? You could just even look at this right here, equals three, alright? This is the only equation that tells us that the, what's happening here equals three, alright? So y'all are tracking, y'all are tracking, y'all are tracking. Let me see something, alright? Let me see if y'all, I'm gonna give y'all an actual arithmetic reasoning question, just to test the waters here. Alright. Alright, let's do this instead. A hiker began hiking at an elevation of seven feet below sea level. He increased his elevation by sixteen feet. What is his new elevation? What comes to mind when y'all see this? A hiker began hiking at an elevation of seven feet below sea level. He increased his elevation by sixteen feet. What is his new elevation? Alright, so arithmetic reasoning, build on the fundamentals of what we were just doing, alright? Look for key words in this, in this. Try to visualize, alright? Try to visualize. A hiker began hiking at an elevation of seven feet below sea level. He increased his elevation by sixteen feet. What is his new, what is his new, um, elevation? Okay. So I see Ds, I see, alright? I see some people saying subtraction, I see addition. I see C. Alright. Alright. Alright, alright. I just wanted to test the waters to see what y'all what y'all would be saying, okay? So this will have to be another live study session, alright? But just so that way I don't, uh just so that way I don't, um hold y'all too long. Let's read the question again, okay? A hiker began hiking at an elevation of seven feet below sea level. So and we just read that in words. What does that mean in numbers? Where are we starting? What, what number should I write? Right, should I write seven? Should I write seven? Am I, am I wrong? Am I? I don't wanna, I want everybody to be on the same page. Alright, where's the hiker starting? Seven feet below sea level. Let me tell you this, let me tell you this, okay? If alright, whoever commented negative seven is correct. Alright, whoever commented negative seven is correct. If you read the question, right? The question is using sea level as the, the the means of measurement. Sea level. Sea, sea level means zero. Okay, so if the hiker began hiking at seven, at an elevation of seven feet below sea level, or zero, we would be at negative seven. Are y'all following? Is everybody? Did I open a can of worms here? Alright, we will be at negative seven, negative seven. Negative seven. Alright, so knowing that we're starting at negative seven, he increased his elevation by sixteen feet. Alright, so from negative seven, what's happening? This hiker increased his elevation by sixteen feet. If we're increasing, we're adding. Alright, so here we have negative seven, and we're adding, we're adding, right? He increased his elevation by sixteen feet. So we're adding sixteen. What is his new elevation, right? So here we have negative seven plus sixteen equals what would the answer be? Negative seven plus sixteen equals alright. So y'all are following me. Y'all are following. Perfect. Perfect, perfect. Let me show y'all why that's important, right? If you didn't understand the concept of this hiker hiking at an elevation of seven feet below sea level, and you just put a seven, right? I.e. positive seven. And you continued, he increased his elevation by sixteen feet. Right, you would've put positive seven plus sixteen, right? Equals, which would not equal positive nine. Seven plus sixteen equals what? You would've said that he ended twenty-three feet uh, oh, well, in this case, there's no answer, right? But twenty-three feet above sea level, you probably would've just seen this twenty-three and circled C. Okay, if you did that, you would've just cost yourself a lot of points on the actual test. Alright, so we have to read the questions, alright? This guy is starting seven feet below sea level. Seven feet below sea level. Alright? Continue your question as, as normal, okay? Plus sixteen. That's how we ended up with. Since we're starting in the negatives, and this is a whole class all by itself, right? Cuz I've come to realize that a lot of y'all don't understand positive and negative integers. Okay, if you're starting in the negatives, right, and you're adding sixteen, the answer is gonna be nine. Alright? So this is just me testing the waters, right? We're not gonna go into this. I have plenty more questions, but we're not gonna go into this, um, today. Alright? What questions do y'all have, if any? What questions do y'all have, if anything? Alright, very five. I'm trying to understand what you're saying. So the, so the negative is subtract so you replace the addition to subtraction. Replace addition to subtraction. Alright, are you referring to this negative seven here? So the negative so if you are a little confused, don't feel bad. I'll do another, I'll do another class on explaining the positives and negatives. Let me say that. I'll, I'll turn it into a whole class. We'll do another, uh, another session. Okay, but in this case, I mean, I think I got, let me see if I could do a quick explanation, right? Y'all could see this. Let me clear this out of the way. When we're dealing with positive and negative numbers, right? We have zero, like, for example, numbers like zero, one, two, three, this is how we normally think of numbers. Right? On a number timeline. But if we continue going left, there's other numbers here. Right, like negative one, negative two, negative three, negative four, and negative five. Alright, so on and so forth. If we continue going, there's a bunch of negatives on this side. If we continue going, there's a bunch of positives on this side. Alright, so let me give a different example. If we're starting at negative three, negative three, and we're adding, I don't know. And we're adding seven. Alright, we're starting at negative three, and we're adding seven. Well, we know that to the left here, we're going in the negatives, and to the right here, if y'all could still see, we're going to the positives. Alright, so negative three, starting at negative three, and we're going to add seven means that we're going to go in the directions of this adding, or in the positive direction, okay? We're adding seven. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, we're gonna end up at positive four. I don't know if that's what you were referring to in that question, but I hope I did okay helping you visualize what's happening, okay? It's not necessarily that you're subtracting three, uh, you know, you're not subtracting, this is just telling you what number you're starting at. You're starting at negative three. In this case, for the sake of the question, we were starting at negative seven. Alright, and then we plus sixteen, which is the same concept of my example here. Alright? Alright. Alright. What an, what a evening. What a, uh, what a study session. Alright, what a study session. So today, we went over some, uh, positive I'm sorry, we went over some multiplication. We went over some division. We went over some, uh, arithmetic reasoning. We went over some reasons why a lot of y'all are being defeated before you even start, alright? Um, we went over briefly positive and negative numbers. Uh, I hope this helps lay the groundwork for moving into arithmetic reasoning type questions, okay? Arithmetic reasoning based questions. If you don't get the fundamentals of what's happening with the words, you're going to severely hurt your chances of doing well on the test, okay? Because you don't yet comprehend what's happening or what's being asked in the questions, alright? You don't, so which is no knock, cuz I'm not insulting anyone. It just shows that we need to build the fundamentals, alright? So I'm hoping to do this more, uh, more often. Because like I said, you know, a lot of y'all, I see your emails, I see your, uh, your comments, you know, I see y'all reaching out on various platforms, so I'm here to help, alright? You can do it. You can do it. Before we leave, y'all go ahead and, and comment in the comment section, I can do all things. I need to get shirts made that say that. I can do all things. Where does that come from? It comes from the Bible, alright? Philippians four thirteen, I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me. That's where that comes from, right? That's my motto. I can do all things, so, um y'all just need to believe it, alright? So if math is your weak point, I pray that it becomes to it'll get to the point where it becomes your, your strong point, alright? But that's all I got for y'all. Keep going in Jesus's name. Some other time, some other time, some other time, right? But, but, uh, I appreciate y'all joining me, um, for this session. We will, we'll do more of it, and, um, I trust God that, uh, that your next test, the next time you take your ASVAB test will be the last time that you take your ASVAB test, cuz you'll do so well. Alright, so always remember that success is made by actions, so get up, go grind, and I'll see you next time.